In their places with bright smiling faces.
Yes, ma'am.
It is four o'clock and we will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop to order on February 13th, 2024. Do we have any public comments, shall we?
No, ma'am, we have no speakers signed up.
All right, thank you. So first up tonight has to do with the proposed adoption of the 2021 standardized building codes to include the international building code and the international residential code and the 2020 national electric code.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have a speaker signed up.
Ah, okay, all right.
Dr. Rector.
Dr. Rector, please take the mic. Sorry, we left you out there.
No problem, actually, I wanted to speak on 2A, which is the possible adoption of a new building code. And I'm here today, Bill Rector, 705 Water Street, I'm here today to urge council to not adopt new building codes. You have been working very hard to try to build affordable housing in Kerrville, to attract builders to come here and build houses that are affordable or at least not so highly priced. Increasing the stringency of our codes is going to do nothing but increase the cost for builders in this, this community. I want to tell you a story. Back when we were trying to get busted sandal across the street open, we, and it took us three years to meet codes at that time, the 2018 codes, we went to Fredericksburg and I went over and I visited with the fire marshal in Fredericksburg. And I've had a nice visit with him and he said, you know, our council here in Fredericksburg looked very closely at moving from 2016 to 2018 codes. And they decided after looking closely at those codes that they would stay with 2016 because it was only going to increase the cost of building in Fredericksburg. At this time, Fredericksburg has three hotels under construction. It's been 20 years since a hotel has been constructed in Kerrville. We've had two people looking at building hotels in downtown. Both of those have fallen apart for one reason or another. We've had someone looking at expanding and enlarging the old Schreiner Bank building. That also has not materialized. I think it's going to be important for us to really look at the need for moving to a more stringent and a more expensive code in our community. I think the 2012 codes are still acceptable to communities. When we need to advance our code, if there's a great reason, then let's do it. But just to move forward with something that's going to increase the cost of building in our community and make it more difficult for our builders, I would encourage you to move slowly. I'm here today to see what the city staff has to present, to see why they feel like that this is a prudent move for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizens' speeches.
All right, very good. All right, who's Guillermo?
Yes, ma'am. So, good afternoon, mayor and council. It is, we feel it's time again to look at updating our building codes. Before I start though, I would like to take this time to recognize Aaron Barnes, our chief building official, and Jason Lackey, our fire marshal, and our members of our BBNA board, as they've worked long and hard to propose the adoption of the 2021 codes. We last updated our codes, oops, we last updated our codes in 2021, which was a significant improvement from the 2006 codes that were adopted in 2008. In light of this, we are proposing to adopt 2021 codes for various reasons that I will explain in the upcoming slides. In 2022, Verisec, who contracted with the insurance service office, or ISO, conducted the building code effectiveness grading schedule. This grading schedule assesses a community's building codes and their enforcement with special emphasis on mitigating losses from natural hazards. Municipalities with well-enforced up-to-date codes should demonstrate better loss experience, which can be reflected in lower insurance rates. The prospect of lessening catastrophe-related damage and ultimately lowering insurance costs provides an incentive for communities to enforce their building codes rigorously, especially those that relate to windstorm and earthquake damage. The program assesses the community's building code enforcement in three areas: code administration, plan review, and field inspection. They collect 1,243 data points to calculate two scores. One industrial, excuse me, one for one and two-family residential construction and another for commercial or industrial construction. The internal scoring range from a minimum of zero to a maximum of 100. For insurance rating guidance, they translate the scores to a scaled class rating of 1 through 10, 1 being exemplary commitment to building code enforcement. The classifications apply to communities under the jurisdiction of each building code department. The anticipated benefits are safer buildings, less damage, and lower insured losses from catastrophes. I would also like to point to distinguish that this rating is separate from the rating that the fire department receives. Before 2018, the city of Kerrville had received a score of 99 due to our lack of responsiveness to the request from Verisec. However, in 2018, we collaborated with Verisec to address their concern and as a result, we received a score of nine. In 2023, we were informed that we were able to further improve our score to a five. This was mainly due to our adoption of the 2018 building codes. If we had not adopted these codes, our score would have remained closer to our previous score. FEMA has indicated that cities that do not have a recent set of building codes face the risk of receiving less funds than those cities that have adopted newer codes. To ensure that our codes remain current, Development Services and the Fire Marshal's Office have decided to follow a proposed schedule. The International Code of Council, ICC, updates their codes every three years. On January 1st, 2024, ICC published the 2020 version of their codes. However, we believe that it is not necessary to adopt the newest version right away. Instead, we will remain one to two codes set behind. Our reasoning for this decision is twofold. Firstly, the newest version of these codes will undergo several amendments until the new set of codes is published, and we want to avoid making adjustments during that time. By remaining one, excuse me, by remaining on a five-year cycle schedule, we will be able to avoid any changes to the codes as well as amendments who will have been finalized. Secondly, in our conversations with Verisec, we learned that the requirement is only to be five years behind. By adopting this code, we can better position ourselves to start getting into a five-year cycle in the future. Essentially, we will leapfrog a cycle to get us within one cycle every five years. We feel this will minimize the strain on our builders and developers from having to adjust every three years. Development Services and the Fire Marshal's Office collaborated with BBNA to review and propose local amendments to the codes. Our work commenced in March of last year with BBA suggesting the approval of the 2021 ICC codes and the 2020 NEC, National Electric Code. The timeline illustrates the process we followed to review the codes. This is a continuation of that timeline, and as you can see, we finished that discussion in September of this, of last year. I will highlight some major changes made by ICC and changes made to our local amendments. Let's start off with the International Building Code, or IBC. In the interest of time, I will not go through each of these major changes that ICC made to the IBC. I will highlight several that are of interest. One is puzzle rooms. They are now defined and regulated to ensure means of egress requirements. Shipping containers, they are not specifically addressed within the current code. However, this version now addresses the containers as more people throughout the nation are converting shipping containers to buildings. The types of construction, three new types of construction were added to allow timber buildings to go higher. This is a change in our amendments that you will see. One of the changes is that we're recommending that we remove the section that says that the city secretary's office will maintain a copy of the books. We will have them available in Development Services, and the codes are available for free on ICC webpage. We are also removing the deletion of 101.4.4 and 102.6, which deal with the property maintenance code. We are proposing the adoption of the property maintenance coach, code, which I will discuss later on. Section 103 is being amended to change the naming of the department to Building Inspections Division. Section 113 is amended to account for adopted BBA code. Again, I will highlight decks, requirements were added for guardrails on decks, 3D printing, a new appendix for 3D printing construction, cooking appliances, commercial gas cooking appliances are prohibited, surge protection now required at the service panel. Again, in this section, books will be available with, at Development Services. This section addresses renaming to the Building Inspection Division. This section here, our 113, is amended to account for our BBA code that we've already For the appendices, we adopted, we had to add an additional letter as IC changed the format in which they number their appendices. For the International Fire Code. Again, I will only highlight, 3D printing establishes requirements for 3D printing construction. Parking garages, auto sprinkler systems are now required for open parking garages. Distilled spirits, new chapter identified to clarify requirements. Again, a copy of the codes will be available within Development Services. Excuse me, this local amendment is being removed. The code covers the submittal of construction documents and we felt this language was redundant. This local amendment has been removed as well. The code addresses fire protection systems for mobile food units. This section has been modified to 26 feet versus the 20 feet required by code. This local amendment provides requirement details for the fire apparatus access roads. The current code, the way it's read, is very broad. Excuse me. This amendment changes the requirement from 100 feet of the fire department connections to 75 feet. Appendix D is modified to provide more detailed requirements for access road and more specifically for dead-end fire apparatus access road turnarounds. These local amendments to commercial and industrial development found in Appendix D are also updated. D 104.1 addresses two means of fire apparatus access for each structure. D 105.1 specifies a three stories or more in height and requirement for aerial fire apparatus road. 106.1 adds language for three stories or more for two separate approved fire apparatus access roads. 106.2 adds language for three stories or more, excuse me, or more for two separate or approved fire apparatus access roads. The energy conservation code, excuse me, this code did not identify major changes, however, we have identified a few. One is digital plans are now accepted. This code established minimum R values and also establishes requirements for lighting controls in a parking garage. Again, a copy of the book will be available at Development Services. We added the word "commercial" to prevent confusion and removed the previous amendment language which focused on residential. We have a section that covers that. Modified sections C110 to reflect our BBNA code, and this section should be very familiar to Mr. Garcia, as this was language that we wanted to make sure we added was residential language to prevent confusion and replaced the C with an R for residential. The International Plumbing Code. Toilets, multiple user toilet facilities are now permitted. Solar panels, accommodations for mounted roof solar panels, sandal, solar panes, I'm sorry, over vent terminals, and rainwater harvesting is allowed as an alternative design. Again, the copy of the book will be kept at Development Services. This section 103, again, focuses on the naming of the Building Inspections Division. Section 113 is amended to reflect our current BBA code. The International Fire Fuel and Gas Code. Major highlights, condensate piping has to be identified as primary or secondary. Appliances, commercial cooking appliances are not allowed within dwelling units. Again, a copy of the book will be kept at Development Services. Section 103 just renames the section to Building Inspections Division. Section 113 accounts for our BBNA code. And then we get into the mechanical code. And some of the highlights for the mechanical code are the clothes dryer, exhaust should terminate three feet from any opening into a building, condensate has to be clearly marked, ventilation, 30% reduction in mechanical ventilation. A copy of the book will be kept within Development Services. This section, again, 103, renames it to the Building Inspection Division. Section 113 accounts for our BBA code. The International Existing Building Code. Some highlights, storm shelters, limited occupant capacity to the occupant load of the classrooms, vocational rooms in the offices in a school. Equipment can be added to a roof if it weighs less than 400 pounds or less than 10% of roof debt load without structural analysis. Sprinklers, requirements for level two and level three alterations are being revised. We will keep a copy of the book again and within Development Services. This section removes the amendment that deleted the property maintenance code as we're, again, were proposing adoption of the property maintenance code. We felt this sentence was redundant as to what is already addressed in the code section which deals with expiring permits. We also removed our amendment to return to what was originally in the code in which the sentence referenced will return to 12 feet versus the 13.5 feet. On the International Swimming Pool, some of the big changes here, sensory deprivation. It was clarified that this was not covered under this code. Hot water, the tanks are required to be listed and labeled. Solar thermal water heating systems, installation requirements have been established in connection to the mechanical code. Again, we will keep a copy of the book at Development Services. This section, again, addresses just the renaming of the department to Building Inspections Excuse me, we felt, because of safety, in this case for the plumbing or for the pools, because of safety issues, we felt that the specialized nature of pool installments, we felt it was important to just remove the exception portion of the code. This section here accounts for our BBA code. On the National Electric Code, a copy, of course, will be kept at Development Services, and in this code, there were no major changes or amendments, amendment changes for us. Now we get into the International Property Maintenance Code. This is the new code that we're proposing the city of Kerrville adopt. Kerrville's 2050 Plan includes five actions to address property maintenance. C5.1, C5.2, C5.3, H2.3, and H2.4. These actions require the enforcement of minimum property standards, raising awareness and educating property maintenance standards. Of course, the copy of the book will be kept at Development Services. Now, this is going to be a little bit more detailed because of the nature, since this is a new book and there's a lot of amendments that we've added here. So I'll try to cover as many as possible. Section 103 deletes the Code Compliance Agency. 107 addresses our BBNA code. 109 incorporates standard language that the city Kerrville uses, and this is basically the section for violation is deleted. And we added the language that we currently use and currently codified within our current codes. And so this just is a continuation of that section. And this is a continuation of the section. Again, this is, this is basically the same process that Donna currently uses. When she addresses somebody for a violation, it just walks her through that we have to issue out a first notice, then a secondary notice, and then the, well, I should say the first notice, the final notice, and then eventually get to citations if needed. Section 111 and 113 have been removed due to our unsafe structure code. Additionally, 202 now refers to boarding homes instead of room house. We are adding 12-inch language that matches our current nuisance section language in the codes, and this is, again, addressing for weeds and plant growth. We added language that can be found in our nuisance section for defensive violation. Deletion, we deleted section 302.8 as it is not compliant with our junk vehicle or codes. Roof-related permits are not required as per 304.1.18 and 304.7.4. We currently don't issue permits for roof repairs. Remove the requirement for screens as mandated under section 304.14.5. We also remove the requirement for mechanical food, waste grinders, and incinerators that would be under section 308.3.1.6. And we added language similar to other sections in our code that address dead animals under section 309.6. 402.2 was modified to provide more flexibility for lighting. By not being specific on the type of lighting required, it also states that the lighting should cover all areas that will be served. And the two sections that you see there with red basically address the electrical code. Questions?
That was fast.
I don't know where to start.
Yeah. There's a lot of information. If we were going to go through this one by one, we'd be here for hours.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
It's obvious that you and your committee have done a lot of work.
Yes, sir.
Were any members of the public involved in this work?
I believe we had a few. I don't recall how many citizens actually came, but there were open public hearings.
Were any members of the building trades involved in this work?
Yes, with some building trade members in there, and then, of course, BBA is consistent of the trades.
So, people actually involved in building helped formulate some of these recommendations?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna try to be polite and respectful.
Yes, sir.
But I don't know how I can access or interpret this information in a, in a meaningful way because you're reading through a binder that obviously has maybe 45, 50 pages. Add a clip. Why are we doing this? That's really what I want to know. Why are we doing this?
Well, one, we want to continue to be current with our codes. What we don't want to happen is what we happened in the past where we adopted the 2006 codes.
I'm sorry, I was interrupting you. Please go ahead.
We don't want to get into a situation where we adopted the 2006 codes and then 12 years went by before we made a change. And so we want to stay current, and in order for us to maintain our ISO rating of five, we need to stay within five years of the code. And we thought this would be a good opportunity right now to, to start a cycle because we've never really had a cycle for us to adopt the new codes. And so with the 2024 coming out, which has already been published, we felt that jumping to the 2021 code would allow us to start that five-year cycle. So the next time you see a new set of proposed codes come to you should be, be around 2027, that you will see another proposal for changes. And realistically, when you look at the changes that we made, a lot of it was more modification to our amendments and not to the codes specifically themselves.
I'll have to take your work because I couldn't follow what you were telling me. You also said just now that we want to be current with our ratings, yet you also said we're not going to do the current one. We're going to do one that's, what, three years old, four years old, two years old?
Yeah, as long as we stay within five years, that's according to Verisec, we would get the credit for.
But we're not current.
For the 2018, no, we would be behind.
No, if we adopt what you're suggesting, we wouldn't be current because they came out with another one more recently, didn't they?
The 2024 version, yes.
Ma'am, I don't even know how to, I don't know how to interpret what they've told me. I'm not trying to be rude, Mr. Rice, I just.
So, no.
Consider us on this side of the table.
No, absolutely. And, and mayor, council, so one of the things Guillermo and them didn't say is this is just the workshop, this is the fire hose of all the information, this is coming back to y'all again with more detail and more in-depth.
Typically, a workshop for me is where y'all give me information and I can understand it. Today, that did not happen.
Do y'all want to do a separate workshop, full-on in-depth, to go into more detail on this?
I want to know why we're doing it. That has not been explained to me.
I'm not sure we'd understand it much more.
Yeah, and, and I mean, we just adopted the 2018 code in 2021. So what is the difference between a score of five and a score of nine when we've only been utilizing the 2018 code for three years? I mean, why couldn't, I guess what I'm asking is why couldn't we stay with the 2018 code for another two years and then, and then look at maybe the 2024 code since we've only been using the 2018 code for three years?
Well, the biggest thing is just, we want to try to stay within five years of the most recent codes. And so in the end, the change from 2018 has been very beneficial to us as, in, in large scope. But we felt that in order to get us into an actual official cycle, that looking at the 21 codes and staying within that five-year timeframe will keep us up to date as much as possible.
Okay, and is it mandatory to be within a five-year?
Not, not necessarily. We don't want to maintain that, that rating of five.
And what does the rating get us?
So according to, what I was saying earlier, according to the rating, what it does provide is, provides the insurance companies an ability to assess how we administer our codes and inspect our buildings and do our plan review so that they initially could give us a rating of five, which then, quote-unquote, translates to potential savings in insurance rates. Again, it's the same kind of rating that you see with the fire code or the fire, the fire department receives a rating, an ISO rating. I believe we're at two at this moment, but it's separate, but they're all about the same thing. It's trying to figure out how we can potentially lower insurance costs for our citizens.
Do we have an idea what, how much does that equate to?
That I don't know, ma'am. And again, it's suggested to the insurance companies, it doesn't mean they have to change rates based on their recommendation.
Right, because I mean, you know, based on the insurance I've been dealing with here this last month, they've significantly increased premiums, especially in Texas. And now, in order to even get coverage, they will not allow you to get coverage unless you, unless there's a clause in your policy that, where they don't cover wind or hail. Okay? And so if we're using the 2018 business code, which has set requirements for roofing and all this other stuff, and it's going to cost the builder more to use the 2021 codes, it doesn't matter either way, I'd stay with the 2018 because insurance isn't going to cover it anyway.
Right. Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just, I want to clarify, is the potential insurance savings for the citizens or for the city? As I understand it, the citizens.
I just want to make a follow-up comment real quick.
Again, but they don't, I just want to say that the insurance company is not required to follow that.
Exactly.
I just want to say, my comments were, I respect you and the work you've done. I respect the work your group has done. On this side of the table, I don't understand, I, there's no way I could parse what you told me.
Well, and I apologize, I did try to go quickly.
It's not new, it's just, it's a volume of information that was more than I could understand in a short amount of time. And I appreciate, I just want to say, I appreciate the work you've done. I do. But I don't know how.
Well, I, I know we had to go to 218. That was, that was absolutely necessary.
Yes, ma'am.
If we wait and, and a couple years and go to the next level, what, what are we, how much are we gaining by going now than by waiting? I mean, can't we still get into that, that cycle? What am I missing?
We can still get into the cycle. There's nothing wrong with waiting, it's just our, we wanted to get ahead and get to the most, one cycle behind the 2024, which is 2021 codes, so that we can stay as current as possible. But in the end, either way, I'm still going to have to bring some changes to you regardless if we adopt the 2020 codes. I still have to bring a whole bunch of amendments to our current code because as you saw, some of the amendments that we have to clarify and clean up.
Well, and let me ask you this, why couldn't we wait two years and then bypass the 2021 code completely and go directly to the 2024 code?
That's y'all's decision if you all want to do that.
How much, just your experience, if we, if we did what you suggested tonight for builders, for, for all of these different areas, how much is it going to raise their costs? I, I know that, I know what, you can't come up with a figure, but is it significant? Is it not significant?
I don't think it's very significant because a lot of the, a lot of these builders that are doing work in other cities are already used to working the 2020 codes and now even changing to the 2024 codes as they're, as they're building out in other municipalities. I couldn't give you a number.
Yeah, I, I realize that. I realize that.
Yeah, I, I realize that. I realize that. I, I mean, even if we did a workshop and came back, uh, this has got to be piecemealed.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, ma'am.
I mean, it's just too much and, and to try to understand it and, and I feel like we're getting in the weeds to do a lot of that. I mean, I, I feel like I need to trust what you guys are doing and I do. So I'm, I'm not sure that even a, a workshop to take each one is advantageous for us. I, I'm not quite sure how to.
And, and that's why we did the work with BBNA. And BBNA went through, we went through the sections with BBNA uh in detail. And they asked a lot of great questions. They recommended some changes and uh, and felt that what we were proposing at the end uh was their recommendation to council to approve.
If you and I rode in a car from here to El Paso and back, I still would not.
It's complicated.
I'm not a building official. I'm not a building inspector and nor do I care to be one. I'm, I'm concerned with, and this may be from Mr. Rice. What is the motivation again? Just to be within five years and?
Just to be within five years. Uh, yeah, just to be within five years. Now, now I will caveat it too and, and and I don't know if it was said, you know, tonight or before. The state is mandating at a certain point. We're just not there yet. So the state recently mandated, I think, the twenty twenty one or tw- no, twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve. So the state is slowly starting to mandate stuff and I don't know what their rationale. You know, in keeping up with it, I don't suspect, but then we don't know.
We're ahead of that schedule.
We're ahead of that schedule with the two thousand and eighteen.
And in certain, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Rice, I didn't mean to interrupt. In certain instances, when you go back to what the state mandates, in certain instances, they're, they're mandating the twenty twelve, some instances the twenty eighteen, and in some instances the twenty twenty one. I took the slide out that had that information. I can definitely provide that for y'all.
More slides would be great.
Oh, yeah. So you're saying that the state through legislation is requiring or regulating us or requiring us to go to, at least right now, the twenty twelve in some instances, twenty eighteen? What, why would they make a difference there? And what I'm trying to get at really is what the motivation is for the state to also have different standards in different places.
I will never try to understand what the state's going to do, but um, that just happened, I think, in the eighty seventh or eighty eighth. And I want to say in this last one, there was actually talk, if I remember correctly, that they were going to go up uh again, but it ended up not going through. We don't know what they were going to go up to. But yeah, so for, for us, looking at it locally, it was just to kind of stay relevant, not get too far behind. We can definitely approach this, you know, in a much more slower piecemealed way if we need to. So we can kind of discuss what that would look like and how to best eat the elephant one bite at a time. So any recommendations that council would have on this?
Is it, is it broken Guillermo?
No, sir. We're trying to refine it and make it better. That's all we're trying to.
So, I mean, if it's not broken, I mean, I, I told Councilmember Garcia, I said, I didn't just drink from a fire hose. I just drank from the fire hydrant. Um, I think that, you know, reflecting back on what Mr. Garcia said before in the past too. I would like to see that presentation where I can, you know, stay up late at night and, you know, cry myself to sleep reading your presentation.
Sure.
Uh, but it was fast. And one of the fast things was lights. You just said it. Well, we just passed the bl- the dark sky.
Well, there would be, there, especially for the lights, we were talking about.
That was just one that I could, I could pick up on. But I think if we had the opportunity to like Mr. Rice said, you know, eat the elephant one piece at a time. But I'd also like to have, you know, Fire Marshal Lackey here to answer questions on it. Have your local builders that worked with you on this. I'd like to talk to the builders.
Sure.
Um, you know, it's, one of the things that I guess is a quiver my quill is I deal with builders on a daily basis. Um, and I think seeing prices of everything that are going on right now. It's going to be substantial to the builders and mostly our smaller local builders that are trying to support themselves, their families, and stay in Kerrville. Some of these codes, like Dr. Rector said, are going to make it very expensive for, for our builders to follow. So that's, I'm not opposed to looking at it again at a slower pace where I can keep up. And uh, Joe, I think, I'm sorry, Councilmember Herring, I think we'd have to drive to Scottsdale and back. Uh, and I probably still.
I still don't think we have it, no.
So, um.
Well, in, in the end, um, again, it's, it's council's decision if uh you don't want to go to the twenty twenty one. Uh, in the end, our recommendation is to do that, but if that's your choice, if that's your decision, that's fine. But there are, there are amendments that we are going to have to bring back to you to even fix the twenty eighteen.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Okay.
Uh, so there are amendments to have.
Well, I'd say, that's what I was going to say. Why don't we start with what needs to be changed? But not move forward completely?
The only question I do have is the property maintenance code because that is something that's come up uh numerous times, as I mentioned earlier. It's come up in the curve of twenty fifty and I think it's also come up in our uh, uh, council retreats. And so that is the only one that I would say that maybe we should take another workshop and just break that down a little bit more detail for you guys. Uh, to, to have a better understanding of that.
Can we just pass a ordinance about abandoned buildings or buildings?
Yes, sir.
Your buildings.
Yes, that, we, we updated the, our unsafe structure ordinance and we also updated our junk vehicle ordinance. Um, but the property maintenance code gives us a little bit more flexibility on our end to address some, some blighted neighborhoods or some blighted properties other than just the unsafe structure piece.
Got you.
Okay, so council, what I'm, think I'm sensing is that our direction to Guillermo would be that we, we don't move ahead to twenty.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, but we will give him direction to bring back to us amendments that need to be addressed. And then the last thing that we just said, um, the twenty fifty, maybe look at that.
Uh, the property maintenance code, yes.
The property maintenance, look at that a little more in depth.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that consensus?
I think so. I'm, I'm a little help standoffish on that property maintenance code. I took like a brief summary that they have. So I didn't go down into the weeds of it probably um as much as y'all have or understand it. But I, I, I can care with the comments that were made. Um, a, a lot of what we hear is that people do not want to come and build in Kerrville. Or they either can't because we have such stringent um codes. And so I agree with not adopting those. And that's why I also don't like us using all kinds of other models. Um, like international models because every city is unique and what we are, our geographic um, landscape is completely unique in, in the Hill Country. And that's why I don't usually even like taking international standards and try to fit them into what Kerrville is because we're unique and we should have our own um standard. So I'm opening to see what we need to change. Um, and just to throw in a little reminder too. Um, rest of council, we did recently talk about potentially doing a landscaping ordinance. And that probably without intentionally throws another wrench into the property maintenance code. How those two are going to potentially conflict or what? Because I don't know what either of them are going to say yet. So that's also something we need to keep in mind.
Okay, do you, are you comfortable with?
Yes, ma'am.
Where we.
Completely comfortable with what y'all are asking us.
If this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just the amendments that uh, it'll be a little bit before bringing it back to you because I want to bring it back to BBNA. Uh, on the amendments uh to make sure that they're.
That needs to be done, yes.
In, in accordance or in agreement, I'm sorry, with some of the changes that we're going to make for the amendments that we currently have now. Uh, and it's really just a rehash of what they, we've already done, but I want to make sure they're aware of it.
Okay, okay. All right, if you're good with that, we're good.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you stay up nights reading this?
No, he does.
Apparently I would too. Oh, wait, I'm interested.
All right, uh, to be Citizens Academy.
Julie. Hi, good afternoon.
Didn't expect you here for this.
I know. Well, welcome, everyone. Um, Charlie's going to give you guys a handout. Um, so this is a project Guillermo and I've been working on for several months and we're excited it's finally uh coming to life and we'll be getting this kicked off pretty soon. Um, just want to give you a brief, really quick overview of kind of what we were thinking here and, and what our plan is going forward. So Citizens Academy, uh, this actually, the thought started probably a year ago.
Yeah, about a year ago.
And so we've been talking about this and really just put the work in a few months ago and, and kind of pulled the finishing touches together. So this will be our first uh time to host this program. This happens in cities across the nation really, and we've looked at several others in the way they do it. Um, it's really designed to just help us have better community engagement and give people a better understanding of how the city operates. Um, how local government works and then specific things to this city as it relates to what they do um when they live here and work here. Um, we just want to increase communication and basically open up those lines between us and the citizens and have a different way of input um to receive from them. We think this will also encourage participation with boards and commissions as we, we move forward, as we show people what's available, uh, how they can be involved and those kind of things. And having people from different groups come and speak to them to talk about their different activities and those kind of things. Um, so basically, we outlined this in eight sessions and we've seen anything from a twelve week session to a once a month session to a year long uh class and those kind of things. We thought we'd start with something simple, um, see how it goes, see what the interest was, and then build it based on that. So um, we gave you a handout that basically outlines the schedule um that we'll have in these sessions. We figure about two hours each um for these um with government, finance, um, development services, water, public safety, community engagement. And that will be basically bringing in like CBB, um, KEDC and some of those organizations that we work closely with and kind of letting people know you know, different funding streams and how those things work together uh to meet the goals of the city. And then Parks and Library, of course, and then uh council recognition. So some of those will involve some tours and so we've uh taken care of that already. Um, Legal's helping us, of course, with uh waivers and things like that. Um, but those will be onsite tours, so they'll kind of be walking and talking uh learning sessions through those to let people kind of see what we talk about all the time at council and other places. So, so that's kind of the general overview. So I'll let you take next couple.
Cool. Um, so I won't speak as fast as I did right now. So one, one thing we wanted, we, we wanted to have a small class, so we're still looking and trying to define what that's going to be, but we're looking anywhere from ten to fifteen. Currently, we have received nine applications. Um, so we're one away from that magic ten and then from there, we just have to decide if we get further, further applications to, to either dwindle it down or just keep it at fifteen. Uh, the applications are due by February twenty third. Our first session would be March fourteenth. Uh, and then of course, we have the last thing is to have a recognition of those participants here at City Council uh roughly around the May twenty eighth. I think it's important to recognize them. So to be eligible, you have to be a citizen of the city of Kerrville. Uh, you have to be at least eighteen years old, not running for political office during the program period. Uh, not be a current member of the Kerrville City Council and also commit to all the, attending all the different sessions that we have identified. Uh, so who will be involved? As uh Julie kind of highlighted in the, in page, in slide two, it's the, we'll have the City Manager's Office involved. We have depart- Department Directors and appropriate staff, uh, different city officials from different boards, KDC, CBB, and some other community organizations that we're trying to line up uh to help us with this program. So again, it's an eight week program, uh, seven weeks of actual work and then the eighth week would be just a, a presentation and recognition here at City Council.
I think it's a great idea. Is there any way to get CEUs for this?
I don't think so. It depends on what your CEU is for.
Yeah.
But I don't think so.
I think it would help with boards and commissions especially as people who have an interest but don't know how the machine works.
Yeah, and that's actually what kind of sparked the conversation with me and Julie uh almost like what, a year and a half, year, year, a year ago? Uh, just talking about, well, how do we get more interest in uh our boards and commissions and just general knowledge of what the city does? And so that's kind of what led to the conversation. Then little by little, we just kept evolving to this type of program.
No, I think it's a great idea and I think it will make a difference in interest and uh to have uh nine people already is, is wonderful.
I have a question. I was really excited when I read about this in the newspaper because I'm anxious to see the water plant, the sewer plant. You have to have a residence in Kerrville, but it doesn't say you have to be a voter in the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, we tossed that around and we found, um, really just looking at other Texas cities that do it, some have that requirement and some don't. Um, we just thought since this is the first time that we're going to try this program, uh, we wanted to keep it as simple as we could. Um, and encourage as many people, you know, as we could uh to participate and then kind of adjust it as we go along to see how it goes.
And also too, since this was staff led and kind of staff driven with the idea coming up, we did not want, we wanted to maintain neutrality. And so as this progresses, if council decides that they want to put some more stuff into that, then we would ma- we would turn that over to council if they wanted some more restrictions on that.
For starters, I think it's good just to allow anyone who'd like to come. Yes, so.
One, one thing to think about is, I know they have a, a government day at Leadership Kirk County. Maybe incorporate that into, I know that they're having classes right now. Government day's already come and gone, but maybe the next, and they probably will have a class before um deadline. But that might be another great avenue to approach as well because LKC charges you to be part of the class. This is free of charge from the city, so it might be a good way to recruit there as well for, for the future leaders.
Good idea.
I was going to say, I'm very encouraged and happy to see this come to fruition. Um, and to get our citizens in our community more involved in their government process is always something I think government can improve on. And so to see this, I think, everything, the work y'all have put into this and the different programs y'all have outlined for them to look at. I'm, I'm very pleased to see this happen. The only thing I'm wondering is, have y'all gotten any applications yet or not? Because I know twenty third is, you know, it's next week, pretty close away. So is that sufficient time for y'all to?
Yes, sir. We have nine applications coming up.
They have nine already?
Yeah, we had them within the first, within the first day. We had, within the first day, we already had applications.
Okay, awesome. How many, how many are y'all planning on, that was another question I had. How many are y'all planning on incorporating in this group?
Ten to fifteen.
Yeah, well, as, as Guillermo said, we're trying to keep it small, but we're thinking ten to fifteen, but we're kind of leaving that flexible to see how many actually apply.
Okay, that's what I was wondering if y'all had a set number. Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't really, we're, we're kind of keeping that loose, just, you know, if it, because if we get applicants that are we're right there at the number where we want to be, we may give a little, one way or the other, um, to make sure as many people as possible can participate. We just want to keep it small enough that we can have more kind of engaged, specific question kind of things. Uh, so that it's not so classroom uh speech driven, I guess, and just keep it more engaging. That's the idea, so.
And if we have thirty applicants, it's harder to manage thirty people than it is ten to fifteen.
And we hope we do because that'll, you know, kind of tell us how we need to redefine the program. We just, we don't know. It's just a starting place, so keeping it simple.
And uh, having gone through the police academy, the class I was in was quite small. And so when you had people that couldn't make a night, uh, you know, we ended up with five or six and, and that's, that's hard on staff. Uh, you, you need to have enough people there to, to make it really worthwhile.
And just to add on the, the ten fifteen people that we talked about earlier, we're kind of using that from our experience with Leadership Academy, which is uh in, inside the city. And I have found a great success when you have that small class to keep them engaged, but also keep them motivated to learn more about the city rather than getting lost in the shuffle of people. So the smaller the classes seems to be more effective in, in that realm. And I'm, and I'm hoping that translates to the Citizens Academy.
Not too small, not too big.
Right.
That's right.
So, well, good, good job, you guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That is good.
Okay, we are ready for two C, our Community Improvement Project Dashboard.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Council. Speaking of not too big, not too.
Short person in the room.
Thanks for calling me out, Mayor. But speaking of not too uh big, not too small, my, I'm hoping, I'm going for the award of a shortest presentation. So mine's not as long as Guillermo's and, but not as short as the last one. So um, we, I'm here to introduce a new tool to you. It's a solution that has been in the works for a while. It's uh, I think it's going to be a transformative tool for our community and how they receive updates about projects that are, projects that are going around town. It's called the CIP Dashboard. I, I'm sorry, it was listed as Community Investment or Community Investment Plan, but it's actually the uh Capital Improvement Project. So the Capital Improvement Project is powered by ArcGIS. It's built by our very own Joshua Young, who is our GIS coordinator. He worked in collaboration with the Engineering Department uh to put this solution together. So I'm, I'm just presenting. I can't take any of the credit for it. Okay, so how do we currently provide CIP update? We do it via a PDF spread, or PDF document. It's uploaded monthly to our City Manager's webpage. Uh, I believe it's under Report, Information and Reports. So it's a static document and it's, when you look at it, it's just a list, it's a list of projects with location that's text based. So you don't really have an understanding of where this project is going on in town. And on the staff side, we manage it via multiple spreadsheets. And so, so that's just, you know, again, it's just very static and you, you update it and you publish to your website. So with this new solution is an interactive web app. You can update it on the fly. You can update it on the fly, and it gives you a visual representation of where the project is, what is it, what is it about, and their support for photos, videos, and, and any other supporting documents. And I'll show you here in a bit, in the next few slides. Okay, so just, uh, an overview, this is what the, the, the dashboard looks like. On the left-hand pane, you'll see a list of all the projects, can y'all see that? Okay, good. So you'll, you'll have a list of our, uh, projects that are currently at or going into construction. Uh, project details, you'll have construction year, funding source, again, design firm, construction, uh, contractor, what phase it's in. Oh, sorry, went ahead, uh, project phase. So right now, we're not using pre-designer design, so you're only gonna see construction in the, the completed projects. The project media, again, you can upload pictures, videos, anything related to the project that we have access to, or we're able to upload, you'll see that there. Uh, that is going to be the total number of projects, so if you pay attention to the left-hand column, that's, well, you'll see a couple of projects that are listed, uh, or, I guess, listed multiple times, and that's because they're, they're, uh, part of multiple infrastructure projects. The project cost, that's gonna be the total cost of all the projects that are listed on the left-hand column. And then now getting into your filters. So by default, what you're gonna see is all the projects that, again, that are at constructions or are, have been completed. So you can actually filter, use these filters to filter by the infrastructure type, construction year, funding source, project phase. And then with that, oh, sorry, with that, you'll see a change in the number of projects and then the, uh, project total. So I was gonna do a live demo, but the logistics of it, when I would have to run back and forth, so I did a quick video demo. So you go to our website, of course, Kerrville TX.gov. And right now, since we're just doing a soft launch, you'll see it under the Engineering Department, under CIP Dashboard. And again, this is your default view, y'all saw, uh, saw a screenshot of that, that's a list of all the projects, uh, without any filters on. Nine projects at a total of thirteen million. So when you click on a project, again, you'll see a visual representation of where that project is taking place. And if there's any media associated with it, you'll see it in that left or right-hand panel. And here's just another example of a project that's actually in the construction phase. There's, there's no media associated with, so you're not gonna see anything there. So again, this is the default, uh, view where all the projects are listed. Now, if you want to kind of drill down and go into the specifics, or just, we want to see projects related to grants, or the funding sources from grant money, you'll see it there, and you'll see the project changes to one project with a total of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And again, you can zoom in, and now just this kind of reference point, in case, you know, it's too zoomed in. And again, that was, uh, filtered by infrastructure type.
That's nice.
Thank you, sir.
Blowing along while you do this.
Yeah, so, so it's a, a, an interactive map. Um, again, the projects that are currently listed are projects at constructions or that have been completed. We don't have anything in pre-designer design just yet, uh, that's a conversation we're, we're having, um, internally, uh, to see if, you know, that needs to be included. But overall, I, I think it's gonna be, oh, sorry, so the next steps, what are the next steps on this project? So right now, it looks great on a big screen, if you're at your computer, you've got a nineteen-inch or twenty-four-inch monitor, it looks great. Now, if you're bringing it up on your phone, it's, it's gonna be hard to see because of the real estate. So there is, our, our goal is to make it mobile responsive, so regardless of what size screen you're viewing this dashboard on, you're gonna see the full, you know, the whole dashboard. Um, another, uh, goal that we have is to configure it in a way where the completed projects will roll off after a preset amount of time. So in conclusion, I think the dashboard is gonna help our community see where the money is being spent on, you know, what infrastructure. Again, if Mary Jo is seeing constructions taking place, and she's like, what is that, I don't know what that is, she can easily see all the details of that project's there, and kind of follow it from, from start to end. It's, uh, it's hosted, it's cloud infrastructure, so as long as you have a web browser and an internet connection, you can access this, this dashboard.
What is the program going to cost us?
We already have the platform, so we already have a subscription to, to Esri's, uh, platform. So all this is included, this, this is just.
Implementing.
Correct, yes, ma'am. This is just using the, the power of ArcGIS, and again, just Josh's expertise in, in getting that data from the static document into a dashboard that's interactive. So, sorry, to answer your question, it won't cost us anything extra.
Do you have a, uh, start date?
It's actually out on the website right now, so it is, uh, that, that link I showed you, it is, it is live. So we're gonna continue to refine it, you know, as we get feedback from staff, uh, from council, uh, you know, that I think there's, there's definitely things that we want to improve upon. So this is just, this is just a start. It's just us getting the, the project, uh, the solution across the goal line published so that, uh, our community can interact with it.
And you said, uh, on the webpage, the homepage, we'll find it under CIP?
Yes, uh, it's under engineering, uh, it's under the, yes, CIP Dashboard. And then, well, we'll discuss about putting it a little on the front page, somewhere where we can have it kind of as a featured, uh, feature section, so we can draw more attention to it.
What's your, gonna be your, like, um, update frequency?
That is, you know, we're, we're ingesting that information that we get from, uh, engineering. So I, I believe the CIP update that is now is once a month. And, and that's being published again via PDF on, on the website, so as soon as they up that, that's how frequent we're gonna update it.
Well, this is exciting.
It is, I, I'm excited, I, I think, you know, it's, it's exciting to see, uh, ArcGIS in play, you know, harnessing that power that, that GIS, uh, ArcGIS can provide us, and then just Josh showing off his, his expertise, he's, he's, he's great.
I enjoy the, just the page with all the maps, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, we, we get, uh, some pretty good feedback from the community, uh, uh, on the, the different web apps that Josh is able to create.
Well, anything that gets information out to the public is a good thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, any other comments?
Uh, one, who maintains our website, Charby? Is that you and your whole team?
It is, I, I would say it's a, a collaboration between, uh, PIO and, and IT.
And I, I bring that up because I was gone last week to another one of our locations, and I pulled up the city's website. And it was confusing and hard to figure out what I was trying to look at, and you go to ours and it's right there. Everything's there for us. I mean, I wanted to look at the police department on this one, and it was just like, you know, they had it under like engineering almost, is what I was. Anyway, thank y'all for what y'all do, because the website is amazing and it's very user-friendly.
Appreciate it, thank you for the feedback.
Anybody else? All right, good job.
Thank you.
We now have a countdown. Yes, we have the countdown to the eclipse right at the very beginning. And it's coming faster than we all want it to, right? Okay, well, thank you all, we appreciate it, and, uh, know you guys have been spending a lot of time on what you've brought to us tonight. So, uh, I believe we are ready for executive session. Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll move to go into executive session pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one, item three A.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, right, raise your right hand, please, and it is unanimous. So, excuse me, at four fifty-nine, we will recess to executive session upstairs.
Good for being here.